I'd like to call the regular session meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Romanek.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Sui.
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Casabun.
Here.
May please have Pastor Jonathan Murky come give the invocation and may we please rise.
Let us pray. Father God, for all your many blessings, we give you thanks. Thank you for this amazingly beautiful day. Thank you for our great city. We ask for your wisdom and direction for our leadership as they meet tonight, as our commissioners and mayor make decisions and guide us. Bless them and lead them by your grace. Bless our city, cause it to thrive. Thank you for all who invest in it and are involved in it. Thank you for tonight. Thank you that you listen to us and answer us, for we ask it in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975, was advertised, posted, and made available to the public as required by statute. The municipal clerk is directed to include a statement in the minutes of this meeting. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we have an addition of Resolution Item Number 16, a resolution appointing Angeline Brumall as a regular member of the zoning board of adjustment, and Resolution Item Number 17, resolution appointing Vanessa James of Barker Galpin James &amp; Service Professional Corporation to serve as Conflict Labor Council of the City of Millville.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Public comment on agenda items only. Anybody from the public who would like to comment on the agenda items, please come to the podium, state your name, address your concerns, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Thank you.
Lynn Pareca-Millville, you're doing three presentations tonight. I didn't know if the public was going to be allowed to ask questions about them or not.
On the presentations?
Mm-hmm.
They're on the agenda.
I'm sorry, say that again?
They're on the, saying they're on the agenda.
No, I understand that, but we don't know what they're going to say. So after they say what they're going to say, are we going to be liable to ask them questions?
Yes, I'll allow a question to you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I will close public comment on agenda items only. Presentations.
Yes, presentation item number one is a recognition of Reverend Jonathan Murky.
City of Millville, New Jersey, chartered February 26, 1866. Certificate, well, as we may know or may have not known, what I've always termed Reverend Murky, and on his going away party, technically is that his term is when he is retired. So he's always been pastor, except I've always called him Reverend, and I will still call him Reverend Murky. But he is leaving our great city of Millville, and he is going to a very cold and dismal place. It's called Florida, but it'll be probably much warmer and sunnier there. We will miss him, and at the city, we will miss him especially. You know, many times throughout the years, giving the invocation of potentially difficult meetings that the city officials will have. But, you know, your words and your prayers for us do go wholeheartedly in all of our hearts and to all of the community's hearts. So here's this certificate of recognition. The City of Millville does hereby affirm that Jonathan Murky is duly recognized and awarded the certificate of recognition for your support of our community. The City of Millville applauds you. Signed by myself and all the commissioners. And furthermore, you have a key to the City of Millville, presented to Jonathan Murky for your support once again of our community.
I'm extremely humbled by your kindness. When I moved to Millville 33 years ago, I had no idea that I would be here for the duration. And I was told, you know, if you're not from the area, and I was really not from the area since I was born and raised in Africa, it takes a while to be received and accepted, but instantaneously, the city embraced me. And I love Millville and have loved Millville for the journey that I've been on. You welcomed me in to do what I'm doing here. The police and the fire and the EMS invited me into relationship with our first responders. It's been amazing. The community churches, the community has been open to my participation, and I am richer for it. You know, I am a Christian pastor. I'll tell you, and it won't surprise you, that I am who I am by the grace of God and because of his presence in my life and because what he has done for me, because I know him in a personal relationship. It's always been my prayer that what Jesus did for me on the cross and his grace and his spirit living in me would be a witness to the world. I've never believed in forceful communication or trying to coerce people. I just hope and pray that by my life, people will be drawn into a relationship with God because religion is not about keeping rules and regulations, it's about having a relationship. And one of the blessings of that relationship is the interaction that I've had here and with the commission and the mayor and in the community, and I'm so deeply grateful. So thank you very much. And I can tell you this, my prayers remain with you. They will always be because I'm leaving part of my heart here. So God bless you all.
Thank you, Reverend Murky, for all that you have done once again for the City of Millville. Presentation item number two, please.
Presentation by Heather Santoro, Executive Director of the Holly City Development Corporation to discuss the shared services agreement with the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office for funding of public safety services.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for asking me to give the presentation. I know there was some confusion at the last commission meeting about this being tabled and the reasons why, so I just wanted to go through it. At that point in time, I hadn't had a conversation with the Chief of Police regarding the shared services agreement, and there were some questions that our office received after a couple of commission meetings ago. So the public safety project application, the draft is ready. The chief and the commissioners, both Commissioner Sui, Commissioner Hewitt, and I believe the other commissioners have seen it. It should have been attached to the agenda today. But basically, the scope of services for this project will be four officers and a sergeant that are assigned to four new shifts that are four hours in length. Those shifts will take place on Fridays from 3:00 to 7:00, Fridays from 7:00 to 11:00, Saturdays from 3:00 to 7:00, and Saturday from 7:00 to 11:00. There will be two different patrols, so two officers will serve as walking patrol in the city's UEZ corridors. Two officers will serve as roving officers in police vehicles in the UEZ corridors. One sergeant will serve as supervision during patrols of all the shifts. The police department will first look to cover the shifts with their off-duty police officers. If they are unable to cover a shift, they will work with the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office to provide that personnel for those shifts. The application will begin July, the project begin July 1st through June 30th, pending UEZ authority approval, and the pay rate per hour will be $75 per hour for each officer that's on the shift. So a couple of things to note, whenever we submit an application, it first has to be, it has to be approved by both the City Commission as well as the Millville-Violin Zone Development Corporation, and then it has to be approved at the UEZ authority. So the application is ready to go, pending approval tonight. The Millville-Violin UEZ Board also approved it a month ago at a meeting, so it's just waiting for approval here. I attached those resolutions to the application. I have to have the sheriff's office, the sheriff's agreement attached to the application. I've already talked to the contacts at this, our contacts at the state, so they know the application is pending. Public safety projects are one of the harder applications to get funded because they are very prescriptive in how it happens. You can't be funding regular routes or regular service. They typically want to have new officers hired, but because of the situation with the police department, they are aware that that is not, we're a year out from having new officers at best. So it's something that is eligible, it falls in line with the UEZ legislation, and I'm here to answer any questions that anybody has.
I have a couple.
Sure.
So first of all, your restriction, that's what the first generation funds, correct? Those restrictions wouldn't apply to second generation funds.
What restrictions won't apply?
As far as using for the police, I'm curious about that, because I know we can use those for, yes.
Commissioner, can you talk into the microphone, please?
Yeah, I didn't hear your question.
So the first generation funds, more restrictions are placed on them than second generation funds?
They still are supposed to follow the 10.
Correct.
The 10.
And we can use up to 25% of the funding for the police.
Yes.
If I had, I read that already. So I know there was some discussion.
Of, of the year's allocation.
Of the year's allocation, correct. So during the course of our discussions and other things I heard, it was that we're better off using second generation funds for large projects.
So the first generation versus second generation is the difference between a checking, pretty much a checking account and a savings account. You have your savings account, but you have $3.5 million sitting in your checking account right now. It is very hard to replace second generation funds. Usually, those are paid back through, loans that are paid back through UEZ revolving loan funds. So you, once they're gone, they're gone. And this legislation is 10-year legislation, and we're in year four of that. So yes, it's smarter to use the second generation funds after you've used your checking account, which is the first generation funds.
Okay, so if you look at the resolution tonight, you look at the certification of funds, it says using second generation funds until first generation funds are available, which is the same thing that it said the last time. Okay, so the second thing I did is I took a history, the history printed out of all the second generation funds expended since the beginning in 1998. And I looked for big projects, and I could find two. Downtown center improvements for $800,000, and it looked like the library improvements, I forget how much it was, but about $45,000 in shared services payments to the CCIA. And, you know, I know you're here to talk about the shared service agreement, but the UEZ stuff in general, the stuff we used, the second generation funds for were $250,000 of seed money for the Millville Urban Renewal Corporation. Several loans, looked like some were paid back, some weren't. Hundreds of thousands of dollars for advertising for the Millville Development Corporation, Wheaton Arts Cultural Center. Some payments for some airport cogeneration system, this Salmon Ventures Limited, I'm not sure what that was about. Tens of thousands of dollars for admin fees, it looks like wages to the Millville Development Corporation. Dental and Medicare payments and prescription payments for the Millville Development Corporation.
Well, all, so.
Well, I'm just, I want the public to understand, so if you don't mind, I'll continue.
Yeah, go ahead.
Forgivable loans to the Millville Library. In 2021, five loans from, for something where we classified as for grants for $25,000. We paid the Holly City Development Corporation for economic redevelopment. Other than that, I don't really see any big projects. I would say, yeah, it'd be great to do some big projects, but I don't think if, and I'm not sure if you're saying this or not, but I don't think that we should wait for the state to approve the first generation funds before starting this project. I mean, over the last three weeks, we had a stabbing, a person shot, and several other reports of shots. The police department needs help. They're overworked. They need the help. Our merchants don't want to wait when I talk to them. I sure don't want to wait for somebody else to climb in my window, and I'm certain that the victims of crime don't want to wait. So, and I get it, I would much rather use first generation funds, but I don't want to wait. I don't know if you guys want to wait. I don't think you'd want to wait. I mean, when do you expect the first generation funds to be approved?
The application will be submitted as soon as I receive the signed resolutions. That's the last thing waiting.
So a month or two?
It has, the way the applications have been going, because we are one of very few UEZ zones that have a five-year plan approved. If you have a five-year plan approved, you're able to submit project applications. Several UEZs do not, so the applications have been heard earlier. If it's submitted before the 15th of this month, it should be heard at the June meeting.
So worst comes to worst, that's probably a month or two.
Probably a month.
Okay, so probably a month. So even if you divided that whole amount by 12, a month is not that big of an impact on the second generation funds. If you want to get started early, I don't see why you would want to wait. We're the ones that have to answer for the crime in the city, nobody else, right? So, anyway, that's all I have about that. I do have another question, though, related to UEZ, and I'm curious, I'm just curious. Because I know, you know, we did some partnerships with the CCIA. It looks like we paid the CCIA some money out of UEZ for the library. I'm guessing that's what it was for, it doesn't say exactly.
I was not the UEZ coordinator at the time, so I can answer that.
I understand that, and this is not about then, this is about now, but I'm just saying, we did that in the past, which makes my mind start to wander. And I don't know if you're privy to any plans with Wood School. Do we have any plans with the CCIA with Wood School to use any UEZ money for that, if that you know about?
Well, first of all, any UEZ conversation that I've had since I've been the coordinator has gone through you, so unless you come to me and say, hey, I want to.
Well, I've gotten that question, so I'm asking you that question, and I guess the answer is no.
We've never had that conversation, so.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
I report to you.
I get it. I mean, I'm just asking because I've heard people ask me that, are they going to use that for Wood School? And I said, not, not that I know about, but I will ask you at the meeting, so I'm asking you at the meeting.
Okay.
So not that you know about, not that I know about. I don't have any other questions.
One more thing I would like to point out, since you mentioned first generation and second generation funds, if this is approved, we can, you cannot backfill the second generation funds. So for example, if you choose to start now, you cannot, once you get the new, the new funding, you cannot backfill second generation with that first generation funding, just so you know.
That makes sense, and, and, you know, I appreciate all the work you do. It's been, it's been pretty much enjoyable. I mean, I know we have a few differences here and there, but pretty much been enjoyable. And as I said, if we can't backfill $30,000 or $40,000, we have 1.4 something million in there. I don't think it's going to make that big of an impact.
The only thing I can go by is the discussions I have had with the chief, and I have fortunately been able to have some discussions with Heather, and I appreciate you being here tonight, Heather. Brock, can you explain the difference on the resolution for me, please?
Yeah, I think, Commissioner, you may have had the original version of the certificate of availability of funds, because that was corrected and it, to remove the reference to the second generation funds.
When was that corrected?
Today.
Well, I guess I would ask if it's today it was corrected. So when I looked at the agenda yesterday, it wasn't corrected. What I would ask you guys to do, the CFO is sitting right here, I would ask you to get that started. Now, I understand that, you know, you told me the chief didn't want to start this stuff till June. I don't know if the citizens of Millville want to wait till June. You either need cops or you don't need cops. So I would ask you to do that. We could have it amended, she's here, if you want to do that. If you don't, then don't, but I don't understand why you wouldn't.
Well, you have the executive director from Holly City Development Corp. You have the chief that we spoke to. I mean, we still have to wait on the process, don't we?
Yes, there's going to be a wait time, correct, Heather?
About a month. This will be heard at the. No, it, I don't want to promise a month, and it is two months, but it, it wouldn't be more than two. Definitely, I'm pushing to have it heard in June, and they've been hearing public safety projects from zones that have plans earlier because they understand that public safety is important in the UEZ zone. So it will more than likely be heard in June, but I cannot promise that. I can push for it, which I will.
And correct me if I'm wrong, this is not a summertime gig, we're moving forward with this?
Yeah, this is.
We're going to roll this right into next year, we're going to.
Well, if it gets approved next year.
We're, we're going to roll this right along. This is something we can keep renewing.
This is something that can be renewed yearly if, if it's needed, yes.
Right, and I think we should account for that by not waiting and doing it the correct way and doing it the first generation fund. So this way, when second generation funds are no longer available, you know, we made the decision to use the first generation funds. We could wait a month, month and a half, do it the right way, use the first generation funds, and we have the second generation fund for later use.
Well, just so you guys know, if somebody gets killed or stabbed during them hours, I guess you can explain it, that we don't have extra cops on the street because you wanted to wait. So as long as you're willing to accept that, okay.
I don't think you can guarantee the safety of anybody with just four police officers and a sergeant.
Well, I think you can't, but that's probably better than six police officers.
You're taking action, and I think we're making a decision that's best for the city. We are taking action, we are getting police as soon as we can.
I understand what you think, Mr. Brock, and I understand what you think.
But we're going to do it the appropriate way by doing it and using the appropriate funding at the time we should.
Let me tell you this, she's not responsible for public safety, we are.
You're right.
And I appreciate her opinion. So you have an opportunity to provide extra public safety. If you don't want to do that right now, it's okay with me. I'm not arguing with you. Okay, that's what you don't want to do, you don't want to do it.
Disagree.
So I guess right now, I'll see if, what you guys want to do. I'll make a motion to amend the certification of funds to use second generation funds until first generation funds are available. So I'll either get a second and a vote, or I won't.
Well, we're not in a, you, she wanted to ask a question, but there's a motion at the table, and I think that takes precedence over a question. So that needs to proceed.
Yes.
I'll hear a second. Okay.
Now, you can take questions now.
Public comment on this?
Thank you, Heather.
State your name, address your concerns. Please limit your concerns to five minutes, if possible.
Lynn Pareca-Millville, I guess, I just want to make sure that I had it straight. First generation funds, you need state approval. Do you need state approval for second generation funds?
No, but they, they do, you have to.
Follow the guidelines.
If you are going to use second generation funds.
But they could immediately start using the second generation funds?
Heather, if the public's going to ask you questions, can I ask you to please stand up over here at this mic, so the public watching us on YouTube and TV can hear you? One moment, Ms. Bure, compare.
So just so I have it straight in my head, if the city used the second generation funds, they could use them immediately, they would not have to wait for the state approval to go into June or however long it's going to take?
Yes.
And then the second question is, if you did use second generation funds for the June, going maybe into July, how much would that cost out of those second generation funds?
I don't have that breakdown for the monthly, but it would be $75 per hour, per officer. There are four officers that are supposed to be on a shift, and there are four shifts a week.
May I interject something? If you take the total and divide it by 12.
Okay, and what was the total? I'm sorry, I didn't.
315, is that what it was?
$312,000.
So divide that by 12, multiply it by two or whatever, that would give you two months of cost.
So it'd be like $25,000. $6,000 a week times four, so it'd be like $24,000 for the month out of the second generation fund, with the second generation funds had how much in it?
I don't have the answer to that.
It was a million, wasn't it, I think?
Over a million.
Yeah, so it's not that big of a hit to the second generation funds.
Let me look here, I have it right here, at least, this is 1.459, 1,000, 1,459,757 dollars.
So you still have a.
I had 95 cents.
You still have a million dollars, and I'm assuming that's an account that's getting interest, correct? Or is it just sitting in an, does that get interest in a bank account, the million dollars?
According to this, it does, yeah.
Okay. And then my other question was, are there loans set up on those second generation funds? So at least we are getting a repay back if someone takes a loan out?
Some of them look like they're in collections. I don't know, I.
But I mean new loans, because I know you were.
Yeah, so yes, there are, there's a, there was an application that was done about a year and a half ago for first generation funds for a million dollars for a revolving loan fund, and there are, have, two have been approved, so $300,000 has been approved to two businesses.
So when those businesses pay us back, that'll go into second generation?
Yes, but it goes, it's through an organization called the Cumberland Empowerment Zone. They manage that, and yes, they get, they are the ones that receive the funds on behalf of, they manage the fund.
But then they'll put it back into second generation funds, so you do have something.
For revolving loans.
So you do have something that's replenishing the funds, so it should be relatively easy for you to get the $25,000 back, is the point?
Well, no, because the, it, it goes back into that revolving loan fund. It will, they will be revolving loans.
So how do you replenish, how do you get second generation funds then?
That's my point.
No, but you should be able to, because didn't Violin set up their program that the loans go into the second generation funds?
When they, well, first of all, Violin is in a different financial position.
Understood.
And, and the way that the new legislation reads, that it's supposed to be used for the, I've had that conversation with the representatives from the state, and they, it has to be used for what it was approved for. So it would be a revolving loan fund, so money comes back in, gets lent back out.
So how do you ever get money into the second generation, then?
It's very hard to do.
How?
I don't, I don't have the answer to that question because there are not, there's not a project that we've done yet that would do that.
But you should know what potentially could do it, because you're advising the program.
The way that the state legislation works is they want you to utilize the funding for the projects. They do not want, they're not encouraging second generation funds, which is part of the reason why second generation funds are important, with the exception of revolving loans.
So what, okay, I'm confused. So what would you ever spend them on if there's no way to, they're going to go away eventually anyhow when you spend them? If there's no way to replenish it?
You know, the other thing I just thought about is inflation. How, how much was that money worth in 1998 compared to how much it's worth now?
But, I mean, $25,000 is worth it to have policemen on the street. That's been an ongoing problem in Millville. It's not like you're spending a million dollars and going to completely delete the fund. It's just a small drop in the bucket. It would make the people, the citizens feel better, make people feel safer. You can patrol High Street, you could take care of the park, I mean, there's so many things you can do while they're patrolling High Street. It's just necessary with the way things are now in town, and even delaying it a week seems too long to me. Thank you.
Okay, Tamara Davis, just a couple of questions regarding the actual program, but I appreciate the explanation of the difference between the first and the second generation, because that was one of my questions. It just seems to me the quicker you can get this done, the better, so that would be up for you to decide, but that's the way I look at it. But, so I have about three questions. One is rather long. So how will the effectiveness of assigning the sheriff's officers to the UEZ be measured? So what kind of performance evaluations or accountability indicators will be used to determine whether this use of UEZ funding is a, is positively achieving its goals and making an impact in reducing crime and violence in the area? Will the public have access to data that shows what is happening in the UEZ separately from the rest of the city, maybe in a monthly police report or another update? So basically, if we get the monthly reports on, you know, the police blotter, like I call it, will it be separate for UEZ, for the UEZ zone pertaining to these sheriff's officers per their shift? So that's my first question, and I'm not sure if that's for Ms. Santoro to answer or for the commission to answer. Can you clarify what portion, if any, of the 24 or 25 municipal budget is being allotted towards the shared services agreement for sher, sher, sheriff's officer? Or is this the full cost of the initiative to be covered by the UEZ funds? So was there any kind of sharing? Because sometimes, from what I understood with UEZ, there needs to be some kind of sharing with the municipality, but I could be wrong on that. If the UEZ funds covers the entire cost, what has happened to the amount originally budgeted for a fully staffed police force? So maybe that's a question for the budgeting time, but additionally, is there any municipal fund matching required or planned with the UEZ funds for this initiative? So will the, will there be a shared cost? And then the last question's probably good for the public, so they'll understand, so if they see the sheriff's officers, they'll understand the purpose. Can you clarify the current boundaries of the UEZ and how those boundaries are defined or updated? So in addition, will the sheriff's officers only be able to patrol the UEZ? So in addition, will the sheriff's officers only be able to patrol the UEZ area despite any emergencies in any other of the city? So does that mean, like, they're blocked and prevented to go beyond this boundary? So where is that boundary start and end? And then that would be it. Thank you.
So, yes, they would have to stay within the UEZ boundaries. The boundary was part of the five-year plan that should be on the city's website, so it's the map in there.
And that was updated per?
It, it should have been.
Okay.
Yes, it was, the plan is approved, and the final draft of it was submitted to the city, so-
So it's available for public?
So it's available, yes. To answer, let's go back to question one, because you, there was a lot.
Yeah, there was.
So, question one, about the monthly reports on the shifts?
Well, and basically, how will you know if this is working? You know, how will you know that the fact that we're taking the UEZ funds and it's being used to, I mean, I know we want it to work, don't get me wrong. But there needs to be some kind of measure, there needs to be some kind of accountability. Because we could, we could put UEZ, the officers in there, and they could, nothing happens. But we need to know, because that's, isn't that part of trying to be accountable for the UEZ funds? I mean, you just can't get funds willy-nilly and say, oh, I don't know, it worked, maybe it worked, I don't know. You should know. The state could ask, right, when they do audit.
Well, yes, when they do the audit, they're gonna check payroll records. That's as far as they're gonna go with the payroll audit. I do think that it's a good idea to have a monthly report. That's not something that was discussed. But the, when the state audits, they will audit payroll records to make sure that that hourly rate was there, that they spent in the UEZ, that their time sheet says UEZ patrol, both the Millville Police Department and the Sheriff's Department. As a matter of fact, once this is approved, there will have to be a meeting to make sure that everybody understands that.
Right. Well, I guess that would be a question for public shit.
Yeah.
So the most successful outcome you could possibly have with the Sheriff's Department patrolling is nothing happens. That would be the ideal situation, nothing happens.
Of course it would be, but-
And you can't measure that.
Right, but it, it, do we honestly think that will happen? No.
It does happen sometimes, yeah. From working in a prison, I can tell you, the best day you have is when nothing happens.
We would like to know the success. I mean, if something, you know-
Well, if more people come downtown, if more people feel comfortable, if merchants are happy, I'd say that was how you'd be determining success.
Right, I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, but there's, I was thinking as part of the audit, there should be some kind of, like, you know, basically, we don't want to see police officers sitting around in a car, you know what I mean? And I'm not saying that's gonna happen. I am not gonna say that that will happen. I'm just saying, if you could tell us, yeah, they, they stopped two robberies, they found someone breaking into a car. Like, that would be successful to me, I would think, other than nothing.
Well, we have, a perfect scenario would be to get more police officers on the street, in this case, sheriff's officers, using the first generation funds. We've been this long without sheriff's office. I have full confidence in our police department that they're gonna continue to do what they're gonna do. This shouldn't be that big of a debate. We're gonna have more police officers this year than we did last year, having the sheriff's officers here. We're gonna have more presence. We're gonna have relief from our officers now from working all the overtime. You know, this is gonna be a success, but I do, that, I agree that we should do it the right way. Do it how we are being advised to do it, use the first generation funds. A month, two, okay, we're not to wait, but, you know, we have help coming. That action is being taken.
Yeah, but my question has nothing to do with first or second generation funds, or right or wrong.
I understand you're asking about the success. Well, you're talking about, you know, faster response times. You know, if those officers are closer to the crime, those sheriff's officers can respond faster to get there and help the victims. Or if there's police presence-
And you also have to understand, this is public funds. We have a right to know how to be accountable for it.
And this is a great way to fund this extra help.
So I'm hoping that maybe, you know, the police department can help us out as far as-
I can't guarantee this. Maybe someday, when other people sit up here, they'll realize that we don't control everything. But I can pretty much tell you that it will be no problem when I give my reports each month to have a line item put on there for UEZ.
Yeah, as simple as that, not a big deal, right?
Very simple, yes, very simple.
Has nothing to do with first or second generation, has nothing to do, just as simple as that. I mean, it'd be nice to know, because it, it's just-
I'm going to base my decision, I'm pretty sure the chief is basing his decision. I think the commissioners are gonna be basing their decision on the professional that is presenting this to us and telling us how to do it.
And then the last question had to do with the, whether any portions is being funded by either the twenty-four or twenty-five budget, but I'll leave that, I guess, for the budget.
As far as I know, and there is nothing, city doesn't touch that.
Three hundred and twelve thousand dollars is UEZ funds. It's not, it's not part of the city's regular budget.
There's no line item for it.
But, and there's no municipal money shared with this?
None.
Okay.
Evening, Tim Sparania. Heather, question for you. How long has, has the second generation funds been there? Nineteen ninety-eight?
I can't, I can't answer the question on the second generation funds. I don't have that information.
Here it is, nineteen ninety-eight, six thirty ninety-eight.
And there's approximately about one point two million in there?
Right now, there's one point four something million, one point four or whatever.
Is there a rule against using second generation funds for this?
There is no rule against it.
So it's your opinion that, it's the vice mayor's opinion that that's the right way to use first generation versus second generation? There is no set rule on how, how it's implemented?
I mean, if you're asking, I would use the first generation funds before the second generation funds, absolutely.
So it's your opinion?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Next question is, as far as what Tamara asked about accountability, police encounters. You know, we have a report generated of the police that are, if they're sheriff's department, and they're having encounters with citizens in Millville. That's how you go by whether it's working, where the money is not paying for somebody sitting in a car doing nothing. That's my opinion. But anyway, we just had a discussion about parking, and how people don't want to walk through downtown Millville in certain areas because of the dangers at nighttime. And also, as we do develop different areas that homeless are living in now, we push them out, where do you think they're gonna go?
Downtown.
Downtown. So the longer we wait on this, and you know, if it's four officers or forty officers, if it stops one crime, isn't it worth it? Why would you wait? You know, I had a discussion with one of the county commissioners over the weekend. They couldn't believe that we did, that this was tabled, because when it was presented to them to the county first, they rushed it. They rushed it through to get the resolution done, to get the shared services agreement done, and they couldn't believe that it was tabled. I just, you know, I'm just putting my two cents in there, I mean, I mean, I sit home, I'm home at night, every night, my ring camera alerts go off that there's shooting. Sometimes it's fireworks, sometimes it's real gunfire, every night. But we're gonna wait two months, because we have to do it the right way. Thanks.
Well, yeah, you do have to do it the right way, and here's why.
Second generation-
Ultimately, I'm gonna answer your question. Ultimately, my name is attached to these applications, and I have to answer to the state, so it is gonna be done the right way the first time. Second of all, this has been an eligible project since the legislation was enacted, and we have had these conversations about public safety and submitting an application prior to this, and for whatever reason, I was told previously not to do it. So-
Let me clarify that right there. First of all, the conversations we had were about paying our police officers. Nobody had thought of the idea of doing a shared services with the county before this latest episode. Nobody thought of that. I thought of it. So don't act like we never, we, you know, never thought of doing a shared services agreement, because we didn't. We talked about doing it with our police officers.
Yep, which you could have done.
Right, but we didn't have enough, and you can ask Mr. Hewitt why that didn't get done. Ask Mr. Hewitt why that didn't get done. That would be a very nice answer. I'd love to hear it.
It didn't get done with the one conversation dies, and I think I was there with Ross one time, as they're right, a couple years ago. Didn't get done because we didn't have the manpower for it. Now we are going to, we still don't have the manpower, but now we're going to get the help from the sheriff's office. We're building the manpower. We got three academies we're looking to fill with the amount of people we can put in there. We have applicants. We gotta move, we gotta move right. I can't jeopardize this not being done correctly and failing. And that's what I am listening to Heather with.
What, what part of using second generation funds makes you think it would fail?
I don't know. Heather, can, can we blow this by saying, let's do this tomorrow?
Ms. Brumal, go ahead.
Thank you. Angelina Brumal. I understand why things were tabled, because there was a funding question, not that we wanted to wait for the police, right? So that was, at least that's the way I understood it when I watched the last meeting, that we were tabling it because we were, we had a question about the funding, and that the funding would be available right now. I asked a lot of questions for the last three weeks, as best as I could. What's the difference between first generation and second generation? What difference does it make? Let's just get the cops, right? What difference does it make? So it was explained to me more, second generation comes from loan payments coming back, this, that, and the third. Personally, my personal opinion is, do it now, take the money out of second generation. If I had money in my pocket, I would pull it out for you. O- other than maybe Commissioner Sui. You guys aren't going home to listen to gunfire like I am. That's what I hear every single night. Don't believe me? Look up the police records. Pictures of me walking out on my porch, oh, look, there's the cops looking for bullets. I don't care where the money comes from. Please, I'm asking you from the bottom of my heart today. Please. I'm talking real bullets. We have the money, we're not taking it from kids' food, we're not taking it from anywhere than a savings account we have for the rainy day, and it's raining bullets.
Thank you, Ms. Brumal.
Mary Messick here of Millville. I've stated many a times. I've been to a lot of these commission meetings. I've seen a lot of things. I myself, you wanna talk about bullets? I have a Dodge Caliber SE. I still have the bullet hole in my taillight where it entered. My house has been, my block has been listed for over fifteen years as the front line of a war zone that is unheard. That's almost like me living back in Newark, where I was originally from. I vowed, when I moved to Millville, I refused to allow this city to be like my hometown was. Where if you picked up the phone and called the police, oh, they'll come out, we'll see what we can do if your house has been robbed. But if you've been turned around, you call because your neighbor's getting a crap beat out of him, you basically have almost the whole police force. And if we're down, various officers, I understand you need to do things the right way when you reply for grants and loans and whatnot. But we're a year or more away from having boots on the ground. We need them now. Two days ago, I came home from the store, nothing on my block. I come out my house to get something out of my car. The very corner of Fourth and Oak, I've got a cop car with its lights going. In broad daylight, I have seen from my own porch, looking down the street, right at a stop sign, shooting gun. I am one resident that believes that should never occur. We need officers. If we can use money from this little pot over here, or this piggy bank over here, let's use it. And I thank you.
Heather, can I ask you a question?
Thank you, Mary. Go ahead.
Is there a short time that we can use second gen funds, like, you know, a few months until we get the first gen approved?
Yes.
We can do that.
Yes, but I just wanted to be clear that you cannot replace those, you just can't replace those funds with the first generation.
So if we use small funds for the first two months, and then we can switch over to first gen after that?
Yeah, and at worst, you would do that two months, but again-
I'm fully on board using first gen funds. That would be my first choice, obviously, in a perfect world. That would be the first thing that we do. Use first gen funds to do it, but if we can use temporary second generation funds, hearing the residents and their concerns, maybe we can move forward with second funds until the first is approved.
And, and if I may, Heather, we've talked a couple times, I did not get invited to the UEZ meeting last week. I think there were some people on High Street that were questioning why it didn't happen right away.
There was no UEZ meeting last week?
Holly City Development Corp.
Oh, that's a chat, it's an open meeting. You don't have to be invited.
I got that there was some discussion about it, and they were kind of, business owners and stuff were upset that it's really, they thought we had just tabled it and thrown it out the window of City Hall. So if I got this correct, because I'm listening to everybody out here, we can take two months, maybe at the max of twenty-five thousand dollars of Gen Two, and when it gets approved, go into Gen One where we need it to be.
Yes.
And I think that's what the other commissioners are asking, and I think that's what Commissioner Sui put forward. Okay, let's up. Do you have anything else for us?
No, if there's no other questions.
I really appreciate everything, Heather. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Heather.
No problem.
Thank you, Heather.
Well, what are you guys gonna make a motion now? You didn't second mine. I expect if you wanna do it, you better do it yourself.
No, I, I, I'm good. I'm gonna second the commissioner, the commissioners, because it still stands, I mean, we went in the conversation, and it gives me reason to second.
Right. Thank you for all the reasons that brought their concerns forward.
Your move.
The motion didn't get seconded, so you're gonna have to make a new motion if you want it to happen.
I'll make the motion.
To use-
Second gen to get started as fast as possible, which is still gonna take us a little bit of time. We gotta get this scheduled in and everything else. Get us rolling, move over to first gen as soon as it's available.
Second.
Mentioned a second, using second generation funds, generation funds first, then rolling over to first generation. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casavun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
And that stands corrected now.
That's, that's the original one that allows second generation-
Susan.
Hold on a minute.
I still have to give certification forms.
I need to give certification forms.
Go ahead.
With that, I have certification of funds and the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, starting with UEZ second gen funds, signed by Susan Quinones, our Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you. Brock, does this get away those resolutions then?
Well, you voted substantively to approve the use of those funds, and you're still gonna have to approve the shared services agreement.
Agreement, okay, understood. Thank you.
And the allocation.
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
That's on the agenda.
Ms. Quinones, go ahead.
Okay, good evening.
Uh, may I have a question? Are we gonna, are, it's, we're gonna take questions as we go, or do you wanna wait till the end?
Wait till the end.
No, I just, uh-
Normally, the, you make the budget presentation, and then you can have a public comment after that.
Correct, that's what I'll allow.
I'm trying to find the best way to make this work on this screen. Okay, all right. So what we're doing right now is, historically, it seems like there's a lot of questions on how the municipal budget works. And normally, what we do is a budget presentation right before the actual public hearing and adoption of a budget. So I feel that, a lot of people feel that everything is rushed, and they don't really understand what's in the budget, why things change, why things are set up the way they are, so we're doing- So we're doing the actual budget presentation now so that everyone has a better understanding of what's in the budget and how it works. I have a little bit of Budget 101. I have a lot more detail within these slides that may have been certainly from over last year, and some of the things that you might normally see. All right. Reference sources. Now, this presentation is on our city website under Budget Presentations. So what you may see in blue are actual usable links. So if you wanted to get any of this information yourself and do some of your own research and educate yourself on why we do what we need to do and what our requirements are, you're able to do that through these links. So for New Jersey government, the functionality of government and its basis of financial regulations in New Jersey is set by laws known as statutes, defined by administrative codes, and further clarified by local finance notices. New Jersey is required by law to follow fund accounting. It is illegal to operate under GAAP accounting standards. I also mentioned that to our auditors, who will be here for the next meeting for the actual public hearing, and they had some things that they wanted to say against GAAP accounting for municipal government, especially in New Jersey. So if that's a question, that's an ongoing issue. They would be more than happy to answer that. So New Jersey statutes Title 40A governs all aspects of municipalities and counties. It goes beyond just budgeting. It goes through capital, fiscal affairs, purchasing law. It governs everything that we do in the finance office. New Jersey administrative codes, there are such a multitude of codes. We can go on and on with that. Local finance notices. A lot of times, a statute might get passed or things are changed, but we don't necessarily have the ways and means to be able to apply those laws or make sure that we're in compliance with those laws. The local finance notices are issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, and it really gives us the guidelines on how to adhere to the laws that may have been passed. Rikers University Center for Government Services offers New Jersey government-specific courses in various program areas that are required to obtain professional licenses for certain local government roles. These are the courses that all of your licensed officials must attend and pass the state exam in order to hold certain positions within a municipality or a county. These programs are free. Well, they're not free. They're available to anyone for a fee. But necessarily, in order to obtain a license, you would need a bachelor's degree or have experience in a certain government role. Miscellaneous notes on municipal budgeting. The goal is to protect the taxpayers. That is the basis of the rules that regulate how we do business. Sustainability, equal benefit to all, accountability, mitigated detrimental impacts. Current year revenue cannot be anticipated in amounts greater than what was received in a prior budget year. There are some exceptions that apply, but must be proven in writing, which are signed agreements, payments already received prior to the introduction of a budget, and things of that nature. Current year appropriations are generally limited to no more than a 2.5% increase over the prior budget year. That's what's called amounts within cap, within limits, and a limit of 2% on the tax levy. Now, some appropriations may have a portion excluded from those cap limits, and that's normally by the state due to excessive increases in those costs statewide. So for this year's local finance notice that allows for exceptions to the normal cap limits are excess in trash, which is not applicable to us because we have the solid waste utility, general liability on workers' comp insurance that increased over 3.5%. So we're already at a max amount. The cap would be beyond those amounts. So due to these limits on increases over the prior year budget appropriations, plus a balanced budget requirement, which are revenues based on the prior year, must equal our appropriations, which is the budget amount, limits our options available to provide increases in various operating budgets. So even though inflation might be a certain dollar amount, we are very limited in what we can work with. It's illegal to anticipate spending more money than we are able to bring in during a calendar year. And money in the bank does not equal funds ready to be spent. When a budget is adopted, the dollar amount for each of those line items, salary, wages, O and E, that is the limit for the year. It's a fairly inflexible spending plan. Our budget intro summary. Our tax increase that's in the introduced budget is 3.62 cents. A penny on the tax rate is approximately $140,000. So a property valued at $200,000 would see a local tax increase of $72.40 for the year. That's on the local tax increase. Commission can amend the budget prior to adoption. Now, in light of the fires and some of the expenses that may be incurred, we may need to do an amendment. Once we have those dollar amounts and have all the information together, we will put that information together. We would need that prior to our next meeting. Now, any amendments will still require approval from the state. Even our introduced budget requires state approvals. We are under state exam. They review everything. We have not been assigned a budget examiner yet. That would be pending. They have so many budgets at the same time. It takes a while, and they usually do that closer to the actual public hearing and adoption date. Fund balance. If you've looked at our introduced budget, our fund balance we're looking to use is at $7 million. Now, actually, the fund balance that we're using is 5 million, which is the same as last budget year. The additional $2 million funds last year's ordinance 10-2024. That leaves us a remaining fund balance of just over $3.6 million. That $2 million of excess surplus that we're using is an offset. We wanted to be very clear in reflecting that the ordinance that we passed last year, which was in reference to replacing the 15th Street Warehouse with a new facility, was going to be funded by the sale of the 15th Street property. In order to do that, we included these items within this budget to show the taxpayers that yes, we are fulfilling what was in that ordinance, and we are pulling the money received from that sale to offset these expenses and to offset that actual ordinance itself. So you'll see an item that's of deferred to future taxation of 1.9 million dollars and $100,000 of an increase in capital improvement fund. These are those offsets of the 2 million. Some minor increases are in a few of the O and E budget line items due to increase in cost of maintenance items, therefore, fire, police, streets and roads, buildings and grounds, and parks. Salary and wage increases are based on recently settled and pending settlement of collective bargaining agreements. Our reserve for uncollected taxes is higher since our tax collection rate decreased last year over the prior year. So our public hearing and adoption again is next meeting, May 20. Net valuation taxable total ratables. Now, these are the amounts of net valuation taxable, assessed value as a property certified to the county tax board. Now, as you can see, it's been steadily increasing. Now, one item of note, it seems that there's a dollar amount within the most recently noted ratables that should be in the decrease. It's actually a tax-exempt amount. Now, we had to include what was certified to the county tax board within this budget. It's something that's going to be adjusted through the year, but it may impact next budget year. Valuation changes per property classification. It gives you an idea of where we had increases and decreases in the assessed values and the actual ratable values. Increased ratables are very important because, like I've said previously, it mitigates the individual impact on any increases in our budget. It's a shared expense. So as the ratables go up and that basis goes up, you actually tend to pay less, not more, and your property is valued more. Table of equalized valuations. Now, at this point in time, with all the cities in the county, the city of Millville has the lowest average ratio of assessed value to true value. Now, this is something that's been accelerated over the last few years, not necessarily the fault of the city of Millville, but the fact that the actual sale value of homes has exploded. So this is something that goes back and forth. But what happens is, is if it maintains a low level, the county tax board could eventually say that we would need to complete either a citywide reassessment or a revaluation. The last time this was done was back in 2000. It costs extra money to do that. That was an actual bond ordinance back in that time. And like I said, from 2019 to 2021, our assessed value ratio was 90%. In 2023, it went down to 65.82, and now it's 60.44. So it's something that's happened quite quickly due to the market value of homes. Property tax for support of the budget. This is estimated. This shows the change in the levies and the calendar year tax rates. So as you can see, a lot of it's been around the same amount, the 1.38. Now, we're back to the 2023 amounts. 2023 was 1.43. We're back to 1.42. Tax rate breakdown. This is estimated county and school. But as you can see, of your total tax bill, the city gets a third of it. Percentage of tax collections. Like I said, our collection rate is lower than it was in prior year. You can see where it's had increased for '21 and '22, and it's declining at this point. This is an excerpt directly from the budget. It shows the net valuation taxable. It shows the increase on the local purpose tax. But most important is the column on your right-hand side, the local tax change. So of that 3.62 cent increase, it'll show your increase based on your property valuation, your property assessment. Another budget excerpt, which is of note, shows the cap calculation information, what's excluded from those cap limitations. We are not looking to use any cap bank from the prior years, and we are underneath our appropriation caps. So if we had to increase anything, we would be able to without having to cut anything else that was essential service. Budget revenues. Surplus, as I said, the extra $2 million over the prior year was 2024 revenue to fund the ordinance 10-2024. Total miscellaneous revenues looks like a $4.8 million decrease. That item, I'm not always a fan of including it altogether because that includes prior year grants. Most of the time, you don't get your grants until later in the year. You don't necessarily have it in the very beginning of a budget year. Receipts from delinquent taxes, that's increased by $200,000 because of that decrease in prior year tax collections. I'd like to put this in here now because it really gives you an idea of what the notable changes are. Instead of flipping through the entire budget document, or if you're looking at the revenue and seeing what increases or decreases, these are the larger items and why we've done it. Interest on investments. We've included an additional $50,000 because the interest rates have rebounded. It's not always consistent, but we've consistently have received a 2% interest rate return on our money with our bank at this point. EMS has been increased by $200,000. As the EMS department has grown, they continue to bring in income and revenue to offset their expenses. Local cannabis tax revenue. The amount of time and energy the city has put into allowing all the cannabis ventures to come into the city and the revenue that we're just starting to receive, I felt it was worthwhile to add it as new revenue into this budget to offset police for any other increases that we see. Now, the $38,000 is the actual prior year amount received, and that was for two quarters. So we're already almost at that with the first two quarters of this calendar year. So I felt comfortable with using that dollar amount. Decreases. The municipal relief fund, $444,000, is state-budgeted funding that's been cut statewide. This is part of what they call COMTRA. It's a Consolidated Municipal Relief Tax Act. Our energy receipt taxes are along with that. It's a large amount of money that the state has chosen not to continue to fund statewide. It's not a city and millville issue. But that is a large chunk of money, considering a penny on the tax rates, about $140,000. Uniform construction code. Had to decrease that by $115,000 because that is based on prior year revenue received. Construction is a fickle market. Of course, with the pandemic, everybody was working on their homes. We had a lot more revenue coming in. When things get tough, interest rates are high. The cost of buying a new home has increased. You don't have as much construction revenue coming in. American Rescue Plan, CARES Act, the COVID money, basically. Last budget year had the last of $212,893. That was the final year and the final use of revenue replacement funds. And these are items to note because these are one-offs. These are things that affect our budget and affect what we can spend on the appropriation side. New Jersey budgeting revenue. Revenue should be sustainable, must be based on prior year revenue, cannot be anticipated more unless proof of additional funding will or has been received. More revenue received than anticipated equals next year's fund balance. Use of one-time revenues to support operating budgets can be detrimental to future budgets. The best practice is to limit reliance on excessive use of fund balance. Do not anticipate all revenue received in the prior year unless fully certain that the same amount will be regenerated annually. You cannot spend new money received. It would be the next year's fund balance. For example, if a large item sold at a public auction, it does not equal money to be spent in the same year. We can only spend what is budgeted. 2025 budget revenues. As you can see, 54% is amount to be raised by taxation. The rest of the budget is filled in with various items, such as fund balance, local revenues, estate aid, public and private revenues, construction code, municipal services agreements, and receipts from delinquent taxes. Generically, generally, this is the percentages that are normal for each budget year. Percentage of surplus utilized. We usually try to keep, and best practices is to keep a certain percentage of fund balance left over to be used in the next budget year if necessary. Now, in 2023, there was $3 million of CARES Act money that was used in the budget. In order to offset that, we had to dip a little heavier into fund balance to try to keep everything moving forward. As you can see, in calendar year '24, what was generated and what we're using, the $7 million, that $2 million extra is to offset that ordinance. But we still have 66% of fund balance left to go towards the next budget year if necessary. Surplus utilized versus generated. I changed this chart a little bit versus what was done previously. Each section shows either the beginning balance, what was generated from year to year, what was available year to year, used year to year, and the ending balance. So the end of last year, we had $520, just under $28,000 of fund balance left. But we generated $10,073,681 for this budget year. So there is some fund balance going forward. But again, fund balance is not guaranteed, and only a portion of that is regenerated annually. Analysis of general operations. Operating expenses, salary and wages increased $336,000. Other expenses, $476,000. Of those other expenses, that includes health insurance and the other insurances. Deferred charges and other appropriations has grant information in there. So that looks like it's a great decrease, but it's not. Capital improvement shows that $100,000 that we're replenishing that was taken for that same ordinance. Debt service has decreased. We should be going for new debt going forward this year or next year. But right now, as long as we have cash flows, we don't need to incur new debt and new interest that we're paying out. And reserve for uncollected taxes has increased based on the percent of collections. Notable changes in appropriations, increases. Increases. Insurances. General liability, $58,000. Workers' comp, $135,000. And health, $208,000. Utilities. With the rates for electricity and the percentages that it's projected to go up, we've increased the electric by 58,800, natural gas by 8,000. Pensions. PERS went up 25,000, and police and fire, 73,000. The total is $568,861 of increases with minimal ability to limit and control those specific costs, but steps are actively and ongoingly taken to mitigate negative impacts. Decreases in appropriations. Construction O&amp;E was decreased $100,000 as an offset to the decrease that we had to show on the revenue side. Telephones, we anticipate savings based on a new contract that decreased by $35,000. Gasoline decreased $25,000 based on historical usage and cost. Facility lease. We purchased the new facility to replace the 15th Street warehouse as of April 9th, so we were able to decrease that line by $40,000. And again, the debt service decreased, so a total decrease of $587,788. As you can see, our decreases somewhat offset those increases, but that's never in guarantee. If we didn't have ways to save money on the appropriation side, we would either have to increase taxes more or dip further into fund balance or cut appropriations. New Jersey budgeting. You must budget enough to pay anticipated expenses and provide a buffer for unexpected expenses and/or increases. You cannot transfer funds between accounts until November and December of the current year after adoption and January through March of the next year to cover end of prior year expenses only. If there's not enough budgeted, you would need an emergency appropriation, and that's only if the state decides that that type of emergency qualifies for emergency appropriation. And even at that, it must be raised in future years' taxes. That's an increase, and that's in addition to any future budget year tax rate increase. Excess appropriations, which are budgeted funds not spent, lapse to fund balance in a future year budget or the next year if done by resolution. So 2025 current year appropriations can only be used for 2025 expenses. 2024, at this point, is considered our reserve year and can only be used for 2024 expenses. 2023 has been canceled to fund balance and cannot be used. 2025 budget by commissioner. This shows of certain increases and decreases in line items. Public affairs shows a larger decrease, but that is where construction is, and of course, that was the larger decrease based on revenues. General operations, pie chart of different aspects of the budget, and it's hard to show because if you look at the pie chart and you're looking at it just on how heavily weighted certain aspects are of municipal operations, and public safety you see is 32%. Keep in mind, each of these departments and each of these areas of concentration within the municipality are very specific in nature, and they all have their own expenses, so some are going to take up more parts of your budget than others. Budget analysis, pension, and other statutory expenditures. As I stated before, PERS and police and fire retirement has increased with the increase in salary and wages, social security had had to go up, unemployment compensation insurance, and DCRP. The city is required to match certain contributions for the DCRP program, and the more part-time employees you have, the more likely that they won't qualify for enrollment in pensions. They would be enrolled in the DCRP program. At the bottom of the slide, I included the actual PERS pension history and police and fire pension history to show how those increases, the percentage that have impacted the city, that have very little to no control over those increases. In 2021, it was just under a 12% increase. 2022 was 5. 2023 was 19. 2024 was 2. 2025 was a 3% increase over prior year, just pension contribution cost to the city. 2025 budget analysis debt service. Like I said, that has decreased by $387,787. That's because we've been paying off some old debt. There's some old Greenacre loans that have been paid in full. We prepaid some other bonds a couple of years ago, and we haven't gone out for new debt. I've included the utilities on these slides too, to kind of give you an idea as well of what we've been trying to do within the utilities, even though it's not applicable to the tax rate. It also, it's definitely applicable to those other rates that you pay to the city. What we've been trying to do is, as debt service goes down and as we're able to increase some utilization of miscellaneous revenues, we've actually been trying to self-fund some capital as we're going forward. So what you might see is, some of the increases are based on normal operations between the salary and wages, and just the cost of doing business has increased, but we're also trying to squirrel away some money in our capital, whether it's existing capital or ongoing capital so that we can try to start self-funding and self-paying for certain items that we might be able to buy outright. Same thing with the sewer utility. Capital, it looks like only a $7,000 increase, but in prior budget years, we've already taken the steps to finance a truck straight through the sewer utility through their operating capital, instead of going out for long-term or even short-term debt and incurring extra Solid waste utility. That was newly created last budget year. We weren't exactly sure where we were going to end up by the end of the year. We knew that not everyone was going to pay, and we knew that we still had to figure out exactly how many billable units they were going to be and what our true expenses were going to be. Luckily, what had happened at the end of the year, and in order to maintain the rate that was set last year and maintain it for this year, I was able to cancel the 2024 capital amount that was previously budgeted and some extra money that was budgeted towards tipping fees, canceled by resolution directly to fund balance. That was able to be used to offset this budget year and to not increase the rates for residents for this year. Capital. Capital budget is required multi-year anticipated plan. It's not a spendable budget. It's used to represent long-term financial planning for large-scale projects and assets that exceed a five-year life. Some examples are buildings and improvements, large equipment and vehicles, infrastructure improvements, and repairs. Capital bond ordinances are required to adopt the budget necessary for these items. Current budget capital must have 5% of total cost available in the capital improvement fund or capital fund balance in order to proceed. Utilities are not required to have a down payment, but utilities are required to be self-liquidating. These ordinances will generally require long-term financing or funding. Debt service can be bonds, which is permanent financing, notes, short-term, they're renewed annually up to 10 years, and/or state-approved loans such as I-Bank or Green Acres. Ideally, balances in capital improvement and capital surplus may be used to help self-finance these types of purchases, basically a fund balance for capital. That's it.
I guess now we can ask questions. They're very important questions.
Yes.
So with regard to our ratables, first of all, if we have something that's a under pilot program, that gets entered in a different revenue line in the ratable, correct?
Yes.
And that impacts, packs the budget on which line that's entered on.
Right, yeah.
So this year, we had a mistake, I would say, about, it was about $19 million, which will, should impact our tax rate, correct?
Yeah.
And it will raise that tax rate to about 5.2 cents.
It would. It would. It's not going to impact this budget because this budget needs to be, needs to use that certified dollar amount. We can double-check with the auditor at the public hearing, but all of that was vetted through our auditor prior to introduction of our budget.
So where do we make up that 2-cent tax rate? Next year?
That would be next year.
So we're going to leave it at 3.1% this week, this year, and we're going to add an additional 2 cents next year, 2-point whatever cents.
It depends on whatever else goes on within next year.
Well, I don't expect anything to go down with contracts going up. So I'm looking at that, so that's $19 million in ratables that don't really exist, but we still have to pay out on that $19 million to the county, correct?
Yes.
That's about, what, $200,000 check we're going to have to write?
I don't have that information.
Well, I'm just figuring 1 point, you know, 19 million times 1.43 or whatever it comes out to do, even for 100, comes out to $200,000, I think.
And the school budget too, correct?
And the school budget too. So, you know, when I looked at this budget, when you showed it to me, I said, where the hell do $19 million of ratables come from? And you get the figures from another, another office. You don't really develop those figures. You have to rely on those figures from another office. So you sent me on a quest. So on that quest, I went to the tax collector's office, says, hell, I don't know. So I went to tax assessor's office, and I was given another report, and I was told it was due to construction, due to this, due to that. It really didn't make any, a whole lot of sense to me where that $19 million was coming from. I figured some of it was coming from land sales, et cetera. So I went to the tax collector's office again, and then finally, I got a phone call, and he said, oops, somebody made a mistake. Now, I'm not going to divulge who made that mistake. As my shirt says, I'm the former vice mayor. I'm not, no longer the director of revenue and finance. So it'll be up to Mr. Watson to rectify that and take whatever action is necessary that occurred under his watch. So that affects the tax rate. We're going to get whacked 2 cents, and now I want to, let's look at the fund balance for a minute. I don't want to get too complicated with all this right now. So the fund balance going in the last year, I think you said it was, what, 500, 600,000?
Just over 500,000.
And land sales, we had $6 million for 15th Street and $550,000 for Agri-Terr, I believe.
Yes.
So that gave us a positive $6.55 million. So 2 million went to replace 15th Street, which leaves us about $4.5 million. As you saw in the paperwork, what do we end up with, 3.9?
3.6.
3.6. So that money went into the budget. It didn't go into the fund balance. It went into the budget to pay for expenses, correct? And I'm guessing most of those expenses were contracts. That's where we had our big, big thing. So, but that's a recurring expense. It's not a one-time expense, right?
Right.
And then next year, it's going to overdouble because other contracts will be settled, and I'm guessing it's probably going to be about another $1.4 million. So we're going to have to come up with 2 million more dollars there on top of the 2 cents for this mistake. I mean, I know you do a lot of hard work with this, and I know this mistake is not your fault. And I know if I didn't start asking questions, we probably would have never found this mistake, and what would have happened is, our rate of collections would have went down even more, correct? Because nobody's going to pay taxes on that which does not exist.
Correct.
So as those collections went down, I'm guessing that would have affected our bond rate, or at least it very well could have. Right now, we have a pretty good bond rating. It's AA. When I was here last time, we got it up to AA, and the only reason we didn't get it up to AAA is because of the area we're in. So that's why we were AA instead of AAA. So now, we're going to have this mess to deal with. Is there no way to correct this before next year? I mean, to me, this is unacceptable. A $19 million mistake in a budget is absolutely unacceptable, and I'm not going to vote for it. And I'll tell you what, those that are running for reelection, boy, you guys that are here that I often see that are running for election, you have some cannon fodder to use this time. This budget passes with a $19 million mistake, you have some real cannon fodder to use, and I'll bet you're going to use it. I'll probably even say it on a TV commercial. So, like I said, it'll be up to Mr. Watson to figure out how to fix it, what action to take for whoever made the mistake. And, you know, I got this shirt as a jest, actually, former vice mayor, because that meant former director of revenue and finance after I was called former vice mayor a couple of times. I told you guys I would do that. Right now, I'm kind of glad I'm wearing it. So there's a mess, and it's expensive mess, and it's going to cost taxpayers a lot of money, and you guys are going to pay the price. So, you know, Mr. Watson, you sent me an email, stay in my lane. You sent me an email saying, you're the guy that took me down. Well, congratulations. Here you go. That's all I have for now.
Public comment? Susan, if you can, please move to the front mic.
Before I speak on the correction, I want to make sure I have my facts straight, so we, I'll probably bring that up to the next meeting. I've already talked to the appropriate people. There was an extra line item in here for the $19,625,000. Proper action has been taken to the tax court in New Jersey, and we're working on seeing how we could fix this.
Lynn Paracamellville, so is the $19 million still in the budget? Or are we able to, so it's still there?
Mm-hmm.
And then you can't remove it from the budget?
Correct, because that is the amount that was certified to the county tax board, so we have to use that as our net valuation.
So when you don't collect the money that that would generate, where do you make up for that in the budget? Because you're going to be short whatever the taxes would have been on $19 million.
We already have $1 million that was already built into the budget previously for reserve for tax appeals, so that will cover the lack of collections due to that.
And then, so in theory, when you vote on this budget, they will be voting on an incorrect budget, knowing, an error in it that they know that is there?
Right, which at this point, we cannot change what's in that budget.
Okay. It just sounds so counterintuitive.
It does, yes.
And I just didn't know, to prevent something like this happening in the future, is there a way to set up a check and balance or a way to get the departments to work together or the different entities in the department to work together so that there's more than one set of eyes in it?
There should be.
So like, I don't know if it's as simple as setting up the program so if there's a change, like there was a $400,000 change in the construction, a big red bar goes on it so somebody can look at it and say, is that right? And if ratables go up 19 million, there should have been a giant flashing neon sign or something that would make somebody go, hey, maybe I should overlook these facts because potentially this could happen year after year if you don't set up some check and balance system. So I hope that you would consider, the commission considers setting that up in some manner. And the other thing is, I just didn't know if each of the departments are looking at their sources of revenue within the departments, because some of the departments, there have been a substantial decrease in the revenues that are bringing in. I know construction can't do anything about, but you can do something about code enforcement. You can do something about maybe court collection, foreclosure collection, and they're way off, like 3 cents on the tax rate. So I don't know if anything's being done, like when the tax collector sees it, if she goes to the department and says, hey, you're off. What's going on? Do you need help with something? Can we set up a system? Because that should really be done too, because 3 cents on the tax, then in theory, you wouldn't have to raise taxes this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. No, thank you. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Bills, please.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion, second on bill payment. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes. Positions, letters seen, and reports of commissioners. Commissioner Hewitt, go ahead.
Thank you, man. First, I want to welcome you to your new job.
Thank you.
They don't all go like this. As you all know, we've had some big situations in public safety. Hopefully now, with the move today, we're going to move on with having more boots on the streets. But I've got something that I need to read. But I've got something that I need to read. And we need to pay attention to this as a commissioner and as a commission that's gonna be coming into this position in January. This is an EMS statement on the situation of EMS. We have four ambulances in the fleet of the fire department. One of them is currently having fuel repairs done. That requires the removal of the cab at the cab. That leaves three available to respond to emergencies. Four hours ago, approximately, another ambulance went out of service with a transmission problem. This commission already approved the purchase of a refurbished ambulance, and that has been ordered. Unfortunately, ambulances are like fire trucks. We don't just go get one from a dealer or a lot. It takes time to build them. We are hoping that one of the ambulances gets repaired and back in service sooner than later. We are in negotiations with the city of Vineland and the city of Bridgeton to lease one of their ambulances. My statement to this commission and future commissions is that funding needs to be put in place to purchase the needed equipment for the fire department. With that, Mayor? Progress.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. Commissioner Sui?
Well, first of all, I wanna personally thank Pastor Murphy. And on behalf of citizens of Millville, I wanna give you my sincereest thanks. I first met you during a city commission meeting, I guess, probably about eleven and a half years ago. So your outstanding service, police chaplain, being there for all our first responders for many years, selfless dedication, time away from your family to do that. It's truly, it's truly inspirational. But your service in your own church is also amazing. I can't thank you enough. Your prayers prior to the meeting, I'm always thankful for them. You ask for wisdom? Not sure how that happens. Not always. But at the end of your prayers, I always add to myself, may I not say anything stupid? Now, that always doesn't work either. And I wanna thank you for your personal influence over my life. In that almost twelve years, we've probably spoken less than four hours total. That time talking to you was very impactful, very productive to me, more than you will know. I'm grateful for those conversations. You have, uh, led me to the discovery of the difference between belief and faith. And there have been very, very few people that have had that impact on me that you have had. So thank you. Now, I know the mayor gave you the key to the city. But when you come back and visit, now, I don't know if you wanna stay in my neighborhood after somebody broke in, but you can have key to the house too. So thank you. All right, onward. Last night, there was some good news at the planning board. CRP received their, uh, general development plan approval. So that's a big step in that. You know, Commissioner Kosabun and the mayor served on that board, so I'm glad that went through. On Friday, April twenty-fifth, we held our Arbor Day, yeah, Arbor Day, Arbor Day celebration at Corson Park. We planted a holly tree. And we wanna thank the ladies from the DEP for coming down to celebrate with us. And after the ceremony, I was able to speak with Tiffany Falcone from the DEP. And we had a great conversation about DEP items, including funding to get the Morris River Trail opened back up. We're gonna be working with her over the next month or two to submit a proposal for funding. And that's a lot better than most conversations that I've ever had with DEP when it comes to city business. I'll tell you that. The past Saturday, we held our first annual youth fair at Buck Park. We had fifteen children participate in selling baked goods, croissant animals, lemonade, three D art, bracelets, and even their own artwork. One kid made some pretty cool little swords, which I bought, and then I stabbed Sam in the arm. And it was pretty pointy. I didn't realize how pointy it was. So sorry about that. We're looking forward to that next year, so are they. The All Abilities Playground at Walton Park was repaired last week. The floor in poor-in-place surface, surfacing cracked and created holes over time. If any of you have a chance to look at it, it's, but now, we put the entire replacement of the surfacing in our capital projects. Our annual Phillies Home Run Derby will be held on Thursday, May fifteenth at 5:00 PM, which takes place at the Rob Shannon Sports Complex. Children ages seven to twelve can participate. The annual Senior Citizens Barbecue will be held Wednesday, May twenty-first this year. Please call the Millville Recreation Department to sign up. Spots are limited. Lastly, the Memorial Day Parade will take place Monday, twenty-sixth, at, yeah, on Monday, May twenty-sixth. The parade will kick off at 9:00 AM behind the American Legion, proceed to Mulberry Street to High Street, High Street to Main Street. There will be that brief naval memorial ceremony on Main Street Bridge, and then we'll continue on down West Main Street, ending with the ceremony at the Veterans Plot at Mount Pleasant Cemetery. Okay, if there's any questions or you wanna register for the barbecue, phone number is eight five six eight two five seven thousand, extension seven three nine four. Progress.
Thank you, Commissioner Sui. And that was about the Senior Citizen Barbecue at the Elks, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, just clarifying. Commissioner Kosabun?
Just wanna add, though, Commissioner Sui, there was Bluey there at the entrepreneur thing. Did you get your picture taken with him?
I did not. I got a few pictures taken, but...
But Bluey was there.
Where did I get my picture taken on with Bluey?
The sword girl.
The sword girl, that's right.
The sword girl. Yeah, it was a very, it's...
I liked sword, don't know what to tell you.
It was nice to see the entrepreneurs, the future people of Millville. So that was a fun thing to do. Also, there was the Eco Fair at Wheaton Village that I was there. Um, Chris with his recycling coach, he was all there and a lot of, gave away a lot of free things and how to recycle. And the biggest highlight for me and the kids was the reusable straws. If you stick them in cold water, it turn color. So that, that was a big hit. Welcome to Emily. Good to see you. Um, it's been nice working with you so far. Pastor Murky, I can't even, because you know I'll cry. But we go back thirty-some years, and you have been just a blessing and an asset to this community. And your patience and your kindness just shows your love for the Lord. It just shows. So thank you so much, and I will miss you and continue to pray for me.
I told you we're gonna need these.
And with that, uh, collection for Streets and Roads. Ninety-five tires were collected, ten appliances, uh, eighty-two hundred bags of loose leaves and grass clippings, three hundred and forty-two electronic waste was received. Two hundred and eighty-two street sweeping tickets were written. Two hundred and thirty-five tons of loose leaves were also collected. Uh, they did a permanent patch repair at Third and Mananico. That's been completed. Permanent patch repair has been completed on Hems Dead Drive. And the permanent patch at the end of South Fifteenth Street has been completed also. Loose leaves, that collection's done until now, November the first. Brushed collection starts May the first. So make sure you get that out there, because they have started. Any questions? Contact Roads Department. It's extension seven three eight eight. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Kosabun. Vice Mayor Watson?
Reverend Murky, congratulations. Uh, best wishes to you and I hope you find all the happiest in the world in Florida. I'm a little jealous. Uh, welcome Emily Dillon, our new municipal clerk. Uh, Emily has, uh, is coming to Millville with previous experience as a city clerk and deputy clerk. Emily has her bachelor degree, and she's a registered municipal clerk and a certified municipal registrar. Uh, welcome, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. All righty.
We just need a motion to receive and file annual report of taxes not collectible.
Look at that, perfect. Uh, make that motion.
Second motion.
Judge received to file annual, annual report of taxes not collectible. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Engineering had a meeting with ACOM to discuss the upgrade and performance of the Fernier rodeo press. I brought this up before meetings ago. ACOM confirmed that the twenty-four percent solids cake was expected from these units. Uh, basically, higher the solids, the more money that we would save in disposal costs. Uh, operations will visit a lower township municipal utility storey, which they've already did. Um, and they will look at the equipment to see the manufacturers that basically we would be using. Uh, ACOM is working on estimate of the expected cost to move, uh, to the bidding phase. Ireland Avenue Force Made Project is underway. Unfortunately, the crew had, um, discovered an old five-foot-in-diameter pump station. This includes, um, the concrete wet well. Uh, crews will route the new line through the old wet well. Well fifteen and sixteen are still being exercised. Uh, water sampling will occur this week. Based on the results, um, the water and engineering department will determine the best path forward for those wells. Uh, if anybody is receiving messages or, um, mail from Meter Tech, it's not a scam, uh, please go ahead and call to schedule your new meter install. This is only for part of the town. I believe it's, um, north of Broad Street, Union Lake, business near Lowe's, Wheaton Avenue, uh, those areas. Engineering is completing the Guy Singer Well, number eighteen segment chlorate upgrade. Upgrade drawings, uh, to submit to the DEP. This is for the replacement of the onsite segment chlorate generation. Four Seasons Phase two D, the developer was onsite, uh, May fifth, working on the punch list. The items were, um, determined through an onsite field meeting, and the list was provided by engineering. Part of that punch list did include the ADA accessible ramps. Engineering is currently working with the developer on the TWA application for the Phase Three of Four Seasons. And that's all I have except for, I wanna close with, I wanna thank, um, Susan and payroll and all the bargaining units for their patience as we're continuing to move forward with contract negotiations. Uh, it's a lot into it, and it's a lot of work on those departments. Uh, so thank you very much for all your patience and your hard work. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Reverend Murky, once again, thank you. Thank you to, as I said before, but just as a closing, while we give, we start with the meat and potatoes of the agenda coming up. Uh, thank you for everything that you have done here in this community throughout your tenure here. And I hope you are able to impact just as much as you have Millvo there, down there in Florida. And the community is just almost to the best that Millvo was as it, as it accepting you. Um, but thank you for everything that you have done here in the city of Millvo, and I know you will continue to do. Um, that God has given you the great gift of spreading the joyous book of Christ. Thank you once again. Madam Clerk, I appreciate you joining our city here in the city of Millvo. Um, I know it won't be easy. I know it's a change in especially the former government. Once again, if you haven't noticed, uh, I don't like this former government. I've complained once and twice before. Uh, but, so it's a learning curve, but it's, uh, it's gonna be a helpful learning curve. There's a lot of, uh, tenure here in the city of Millvo throughout, not just here in City Hall, but throughout all departments, um, that will hopefully be graciously helping you with, you know, maybe the lowest and simplest form of a question. But we're a growing city, and as you see, we grow, and we have some sometimes difficulties here. But, uh, we're always, uh, pointing forward to grow this city and help this populace grow and, uh, accompany all of our citizens here in the city of Millvo. So I look forward to working with you in the future here in the city of Millvo. So thank you.
Thank you.
Planning Board has master plan, as Commissioner Sui has said, yes, uh, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner, Jesus. I will always call you that. Commissioner Kosabun and I do sit on the planning board. And yes, uh, good news, CRP did their general development plan. Um, moving on, they would do individual site plans and come forth with the projects out there. On May fourteenth, I will be tending the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. Since Commissioner Sui brought this up, figured I'd talk about this. Um, environmental protection, according to the invited to the 2025 Clean Communities Grant Announcement Ceremony. I get to go all the way up to North Jersey, because nothing happens here in South Jersey, to attend this, uh, which I perceive is gonna be a, a great time, uh, getting to see, be invited with the DEP and going to meet the DEP hand on hand for this joyous, uh, well, rewarding celebration of the Clean Communities Act, which we do graciously accept here in the city of Millvo. In 2024, Millvo will receive seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars in clean communities funding to learn how much more you receive in your town. So going to that, I will be giving a, a nice check and see what we'll be getting for 2025. So master plan, uh, Planning Board's next meeting will be on Monday, May twelfth at 6:30, and that is only on master plan review. I would advise the public to please come. Uh, it is only dedicated to master plan review. Moving on with that, we had, uh, Public Affairs Department, we had a hundred and six violations notices issued in April with a hundred and seventy-six violations cited. I thank you to all my commissioners so far during this discussion and your information given to the people of Millvo. Ordinances in the second reading.
An ordinance rescinding ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty-five, adopted April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, to change the dates of a coin drop for the Millvo Police Athletic League to June seventh, twenty twenty-five and June eighth, twenty twenty-five at the intersections of Buck Shootum Road and Cedarville Road.
Make motion.
Second. We have motion in the second on ordinance in the second reading, item number one. Here's a public hearing. I would now open the public hearing on this, uh, this ordinance in the second reading. If anybody would like to come to the podium, state your name. Seeing nobody, I would close public hearing. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Ordinance in the first reading, seeing none. Resolutions, please.
Resolution item number one, motion to remove resolution approving shared services agreement between the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office and the City of Millvo for the provision of public safety services from the table.
Make motion.
Second. We have motion in the second to remove the, the table. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution approving shared services agreement between the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office and the City of Millvo for the provision of public safety services.
Make motion.
Second.
We have motion in the second on the shared services agreement.
I already read the certification of funds.
Have they correct one?
Yes.
Any comments?
Thank you, Heather, for everything.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number two, resolution rescinding letter of support for the suitability of a cannabis facility granted to elite business management services.
Make motion.
Second.
We have motion in the second on resolution item number two. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yep.
Resolution item number three, resolution appointing Jennifer Hanley as a member of the Millvo Housing Authority.
Make a motion?
Second.
We have motion in the second, resolution item number three. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number four, resolution authorizing special assessment of municipal liens for certain properties due to expenses incurred by the city of Millvo relating to board and secure plus administrative fees in accordance with Chapter eleven, Article two of the municipal code.
Make motion on resolution item number four.
Second motion.
We have motion in the second on resolution item number four. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number five, resolution authorizing adjustments to the taxing utility records.
Make motion on resolution item number five.
Second motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number six, resolution authorizing the word of a state contract for NFPA accessories for the fire department.
Make motion. With that, I have certification of funds in the amount of twenty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents, signed by our chief financial officer, Susan Canones.
Second motion? Second motion.
Second motion.
We have motion in the second on resolution item number six. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number seven, resolution authorizing approval to submit L A A E X dash two grant award extension application on executed grant contract with the N J D O T for the project entitled Pleasant Drive Roadway Improvements.
I make a motion?
Second motion.
We have motion in the second on resolution item number seven. Any comments? Pleasant Drive residents, your road is coming. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Absane.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number eight, resolution authorizing the add back of property tax deductions as per N J S A fifty-four point four dash four for the failure to return the annual post-tax year statement or for exceeding the statutory income limit.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion in the second on resolution item number eight. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number nine, resolution authorizing water and sewer termination on May nineteenth twenty twenty-five due to failure to comply with the utility ordinance pursuant to section fifty-six dash eighteen of the municipal code.
Make motion on resolution item number nine.
Second motion.
We have motion in the second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number ten, resolution authorizing the city of Millville to support the N J D O T project, Route forty-seven from Henderson Ave to High Street.
Make motion.
Second.
We have motion in the second on resolution item number ten. Any comments? Yes, incoming, we have a lot of projects in the city of Millville involving road construction in the upcoming months, if you can't see already outside our windows. The bridge replacement is imminent. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item eleven, resolution calling for the restoration of energy taxes to municipalities.
Make motion.
Second motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek? Resolution item number twelve, resolution authorizing an application to the New Jersey Enterprise Zone Authority for first generation enterprise zone assistant funds for the Millville Public Safety Project.
Make motion.
Second.
We have motion in the second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number thirteen, resolution authorizing an application to the New Jersey Enterprise Zone Authority for first generation enterprise administration funds for city of Millville fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Make motion.
Second.
We have motion in the second on resolution item number thirteen. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number fourteen, resolution appointing Roy Shepherd as a regular member of the zoning board of adjustment.
I make a motion?
Second motion.
Motion in the second on resolution item number fourteen. Any comments? I would thank Roy for reaching out, and I know you continue to do a great job on the zoning board. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number fifteen, resolution approving shared services agreement between the city of Bridgeton and the city of Millville for mutual aid.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion in the second. Any comments?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, my role is always has the safety, has been the safety of the public as my primary concern. My heartfelt condolences are still with the families affected by the two most recent major fires. The causes of these fires are still ongoing, and I cannot comment at this time until the investigations are completed. The fire department responds to almost sixteen hundred calls each year. The fire department operates with five trucks. In the last month, one of the ladders was damaged by the extreme radiant heat at a fire and is out of service. One of the engines, which is over twenty-five years old, needs the motor rebuilt and is out of service. Another engine is also out of service with motor related issues. This leaves us with only one engine and one ladder in the building. The fire department and fleet maintenance are diligent in performing the required maintenance. Normal use and age of the apparatus cannot be overcome by regular maintenance alone. As we move forward, the fire department needs to replace one of the engines. This process, this entire process takes almost three years before it would be delivered. Unfortunately, the funding for that is not in place. In the meantime, the city of Bridgeton is loaning us a reserve piece of apparatus. If you see a Bridgeton fire truck in the city, it will still be staffed by Millville firefighters. Thank you, City of Bridgeton Fire Department and Bridgeton City Council for helping us in our time of need. Speaking of staffing, I'll be brief, but the police and fire department can use additional staffing in order for them to properly do their jobs. We need to take steps to increase the staffing of both these departments. I hope this commission and future commissions see the need for the action to increase the staffing as soon as possible. Thank you.
Do me have a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number sixteen, resolution, resolution appointing Angeline Brumal as a regular member of the zoning board of adjustment.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion in the second, resolution item number sixteen. Who put this on the agenda?
I did.
Thank you. Just can you give me a heads up? Next time, please. I look forward to filling now all the regular members of the zoning board. Believe, yes, now there is two alternates remaining. So, if anybody else would like to join the zoning board, please step on forward, not this meeting, but send an email right on over. Roll call, please.
Yes. Oops.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
No.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number seventeen, resolution appointing Vanessa James of Barker, Gal Fan James in service professional corporation to serve as a conflict labor council of the city of Millville.
Make motion, and with that, I do have certification of availability of funds in the contracted amount of five thousand dollars, signed by our chief financial, chief financial officer, Susan Quinones.
Second motion.
We have motion in the second on resolution item number seventeen. Any comments?
Yes. So, now, I'm talking about this conflict, conflict labor council. So, this is for an attorney to do investigations. This particular investigation is against me, again, big surprise. So, I'll tell you this, to be an effective commissioner, it's necessary to tell employees what to do. Keep the interests of the citizens at the top of the priority list, not the interest of the employees, although they do coincide. Next, you know, you have to, you have to hold your department people accountable. You saw a huge mistake with the budget. I hope that person that made that mistake is held accountable for that mistake. But when you do hold employees accountable, some of them are a little devious and creative. And those devious and creative ones, they'll file complaints. They'll file all kind of complaints. And I'm confident I did nothing wrong. How do I know? Because I know I did nothing wrong. During my tenure as commissioner, I've been investigated by labor attorneys, the prosecutor's office, the officer of public integrity, all at the behest of disgruntled employees. And you know what? I have never been found to do anything wrong. So, I'm not afraid of investigations. I'm not going to not do my job because I get investigated. I expect to get investigated. And considering how many times I have been investigated, the people of the city ought to have a pretty, be pretty confident that I'm not doing anything wrong. Because if I was, I've made plenty of enemies doing this job, believe me. They would have chopped my head off, thrown me in jail. I don't know what else they would have done. So, I can welcome these investigations. Now, there are a few things that should be investigated. Certificates of occupancy, continuance, continuing certificates of occupancy and building permits, missing out of construction files, that kind of stuff should be investigated. Let's see what else should be investigated. The financial relationship between a previous zoning officer and a developer, that should be investigated. That's a worthwhile investigation. The operation of any illegal gun range on Dividing Creek Rose, Road is evidenced by an email from a police officer to a prior zoning officer. That should be investigated. The statement of a sitting commissioner that a respected member of the community had received a dishonorable discharge when in fact, the individual's discharge was honorable. The harm that this can do to a business owner can be irreparable, and it's completely unacceptable. Those are the kind of things that we ought to spend money investigating, not wasting money when we have so many other priorities. But employees will play their games. You know, as the saying goes, you play your game, I'll play mine. And round and round we'll go. So, you know, some people think just because something keeps occurring that there's something there, but there's not. What's there are a few disgruntled employees. In fact, one of them had just gotten a ten thousand dollar pay raise and got upset because they didn't get another ten thousand dollar pay raise in the same year. Now, I don't know what you guys think, but when you have labor negotiations, labor contracts, I don't know. Why would you give somebody twenty thousand dollar pay raise and yet not give your fireman and police officer pay raise? I don't know. But that's the kind of stuff that happens. And then when it doesn't happen, certain people get mad and start filing complaints. So, I welcome this investigation. It'll be over with soon enough, and when it is, I'll let you know the results. That's all I have. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes. New business.
We have a motion to authorize the filing special event on public lands application pending approvals, the Christian Community Event sponsored by Women's Ministry at the Captain Joseph Buck Waterfront Park on Saturday, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, from ten thirty A M. to three P M.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion in the second on new business item number one. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes. We have now reached the public comment portion of our meeting. Anyone who would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name, address your concerns, and please limit your comments to approximately five minutes. That was a yes. They passed.
Hi Cindy Cook, Valene. First of all, I would like to, even though he's left, I would like to congratulate the Reverend on a well deserved honor. He's always there throughout the community when we need him. I know I've called on him several times in the past, and he's always been there to be of assistance. Next, as Millville's representative on the homeless trust fund, code blue is officially over, and now we're ramping up for code red. Code red is called when the O E M decides that the temperatures are too hot out or that the air quality is too poor for the people to be out there every single day. I have served on the homeless trust fund now for over seven years. For those that do not know what the homeless trust fund is, we're a group that is appointed by a mayor, and then we're voted on by the county commissioners or, you know, for our positions. The money that is used, is used for, to provide housing, rental assistance and supportive services to homeless individuals and families throughout our county. And this, we, we have quarterly meetings where we vote on different agencies and all that will get the assistance, and they, they tell us how and what they're doing with the money. That said, now, the next thing is, I also serve on the C E A S, which is the continuum of care throughout Cumberland County. Now, just so everybody is aware, tomorrow, you can anticipate almost a thousand teenagers on High Street and area there. It is the Cape May County and Cumberland County Joint Teen Arts Festival, which we have every year, and there will be kids traveling up and down into the different locations to attend classes and to perform and to show their exhibits. So, I, I guess they're going to start arriving around eight thirty, quarter to nine, and they'll probably start, it'll be over with by two thirty. So, just when you're in the area of downtown, please use caution, because sometimes kids get very excited, and they might walk out or, you know, jaywalk or whatever. So, we want to use a lot of, this is something that's very, very important to us, and the kids have been phenomenal. They're, when they come to Millville, they really, really, really use extreme manners. They're so polite and courteous, and so I hope that our citizens will respect them as much as they respect us. Thank you.
Thank you Cindy.
Tamara Davis, in regards to the water meters, I know you mentioned that the first round of letters went out, but how will you follow up or how will the, the company follow up on making sure that every house in that particular area does get, does respond to the letters? City's spending a lot of money on this, so it will be in the best interest to get every house with the proper meters. Also, I had requested this before, and I still haven't seen it, but there should probably be some kind of letter that is in, on the website indicating why this is happening and any laws that it's following. Most of the municipalities that I have done research on that are going through the same thing had at least a letter on their webpage explaining the process and explaining the reasoning. And also I had requested this before and I still have not seen it, and again, this is something we're paying a lot of money for, so there should be some information on what neighborhoods and what areas of the city are gonna be done and in what order, so we can expect it. A lot of people don't watch these meetings, a lot of these letters are probably gonna be ignored, people are gonna consider them junk mail. So, and I might even do that myself if I'm not paying attention, so there's, needs to be better communication, there needs to be better information sent out in regards to replacing these water meters. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Patricia Clark Kears, I just wanted to know if the state has given a start date for the Main Street Bridge yet?
No.
Okay. When it is, when it happens, I'm sure plans are in place to make sure that first responders get priority to get to the west side of town.
I will double check with engineering, but I'm sure, as you, okay, I'll, I got a lot to say about it.
And then my next comment is, the sand trucks that come up from the sand plants like near Laurel Lake and down below, is there any way they can be diverted over the Morristown Bridge and go up forty-seven to avoid town while the bridge is under construction to alleviate some of that big truck, truck traffic over Brandriff and Sharp? Thank you.
Let me take it?
I got the, I got the first part.
Lynn Parek of Millville, I just want to say thank you very much for voting for, to use the UEZ funds and to start that project, Roy. I really appreciate that you listened to the people that got up and talked and took care of it, so thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I will close public comment portion, closing comments, commissioners.
Uh, thank you everybody for coming out. Reverend Pastor Matt Murky, he knows how I feel about him. It would have been a repeat of about five times I've been to activities for him. Folks, we gotta start looking, budget is being done, I don't know what we're gonna do. There's gonna be different people sitting up here next year, you better start looking at what you're gonna do when you start talking to people about your campaign. I am not kidding, this city is not kidding. Public safety needs help. We've got slots in the police department that we're budgeted for and we're doing all we can do to fill those slots with three academies coming up. But we gotta get people and everybody around us, yeah, I know, it's always money, but everybody around us is looking for candidates for those academies too. State troopers are looking, everybody's looking. We gotta progress. This city has sat on its hands for way too many years, afraid to raise taxes. You know, the tax increase we're talking about today, I looked at my evaluation, my tax increase for the City of Millville only, this is what we gotta realize, people, the Board of Education's a separate tax increase, county's separate tax increase. My tax increase that was proposed today, tonight, at three point six, is sixty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents a year. Look at it that way, folks. Look at it that way. That's a half carton cigarettes for me a week. Sorry, but that's the way I look at it. People don't look at it this way, they look at us as, we're the big meanies in the castle, we're just gonna increase all this money. Take a look, think about it, think about public safety, think about what the city needs, not just, city needs to work on things. I just did a look at my city phone, just out of curiosity, since midnight last night, I have an app on here that shows me where fire and rescue are going and when they're responding, and as of now, there's been thirty-four calls, just to let you know how the ambulance is called on at times. Up to, while I'm speaking, there's been thirty-four calls since midnight and we're down to two ambulances. Luckily, we can work with the communities, we'll get this done, just like we got the fire truck done, and I gotta thank my chiefs for doing that. Heather, sorry it got into such a blow up, I think we made headway, we're getting moving and I think everybody's happy and thank you, and thank you everybody for coming out.
Commissioner Sui?
Well, first of all, I received an email from the chief today about the fire equipment. I copied Susan and asked for additional funding, I know, Mr. Hewitt, you know that. Welcome Emily, and the only other thing I can possibly say is now I know why they put warning labels or not warning labels, directions on shampoo bottles, and with that, progress.
Commissioner Casabun?
Nothing.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Hey again, congratulations to Reverend Murky, welcome Emily. You know, I think it was a good thing, you know, it kinda, you know, paused progression there for a little bit, but it was a good thing that, you know, somebody wanted to go out and make sure that, you know, the i's were dotted and t's were crossed to make sure that we could financially do this the right way. So, you know, I think it was a good recommendation from you, Commissioner Hewitt, to look at the UEZ and the way we're gonna spend first gen and second gen. Thank you Heather for all the information provided and I think, you know, a good thank you should go out to the residents for bringing their concerns forward. You know, kinda looking at the meeting, you know, a few things frustrated me, what was said, but I think like all in all, you know, there's just the team effort, you know, Holly City Development Court, you know, Commissioner Hewitt with the fire truck for Bridgeton, Commissioner Sui, you know, putting together the UEZ and the Sheriff's Department Shared Service Agreement, you know, I think it's very, it's very successful. Thank you Susan for preparing the budget, I know nobody wanted to hear a tax increase, but unfortunately, as you could see, we need a fire truck, we need ambulance, we need police officers, we need firefighters, and that's not including plow trucks for streets and roads and paying city employees good rates to keep it competitive, to keep good people here. You have to expect a tax increase, especially in this world that we're in. Obviously, I don't think anybody's gonna be happy, but it's just necessary, but with that's all I have to say.
Thank you Vice Mayor. That's, nothing like a three hour and fifteen minute meeting to break in a brand new clerk to the City of Millville, but, uh, all in good order. We joked about it being long before the meeting started and I was like, I don't know, might be, but, uh, thank you for the public coming out. Before I forget, write it down. Water meter letter on website, good, uh, and progression on tracking it, make sure people get the upgrades, I'll work with Vice Mayor Watson and Water Department for, and Rock are figuring all that out. NJDOT, zero communication. Fun fact, when the, it was Monday, yes, you started, or last Monday, last Monday, twenty-eighth was the start date of Madam Clerk, and DOT was out there on Ware Avenue doing construction. Guess what they didn't tell us? That is, we, no email between any of us, no email to any of the engineer, nobody to the clerk's office, to Police Department for Public Safety, and they just started doing their work. Engineering did talk to them, we did say, can you please let us know, we get it, you're the contractor, but your directive is ordered from the state in New Jersey. A clearly marked irrigation line on the side of the embankment was nailed by them. It flooded immensely, the whole entire area, then they proceeded to pour concrete and flooded in muddy dirt. Guess what?